We have twenty-four present and six absent. I'm sorry, twenty-five.
I think Kelly's here.
Four absent and one on. On open seat. All right.
Twenty-eight present and two absence, and that's final.
Two. All right. Okay, thank you. Well, that worked excellent. Step closer. All right. By the pledge of allegiance, could we please rise and Supervisor Johns, why don't you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a moment to reflect on what were our issues tonight. Please be seated. We are in compliance with the open meetings law, Mr. Administrator?
We are, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Who is Supervisor Backland so moved? Do I have a second? Second Supervisor Jacob. Any discussion? Anything we need to move? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Approval of the January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes. Supervisor Knott?
I will uphold people of the minutes as presented.
Second. And who's second? Supervisor Morris is the second. Any discussion changes? Anybody notice anything we missed? Seeing none? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? We'll move on to communications.
Okay, tonight you have several things on your desk. The first communication is the notice of the public hearing, February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, beginning at seven P.M. in room two oh five. Item B is a letter from Sheriff Milbraith regarding the resignation of Supervisor Augie Teets. Item C is some appointments by the county board chair. Item D, additional appointments by the county board chair. Item E is the twenty-twenty-two budget calendar and item F is the treasures report.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Any questions for the clerk? Okay. Moving on to item number eight, Special Order of Business, Certification of the Jefferson County Farmland Preservation Plan, Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection, DAT cap page nine. Mister, uh, Mister Jacob?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Ordinance number twenty, twenty...
Seventeen.
Whereas section ninety-one point sixteen of the Wisconsin State statute provides that farmland preservation plan may be certified by the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection for up to ten years, and whereas Jefferson County's farmland preservation plan is set to expire in December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas Jefferson County Board of Superv- Board adopted the public participation plan on February second, twenty-nineteen, to guide the process of amending the Jefferson County Farmland Preservation Plan, and whereas the final version of the Agricultural Preservation and Land Use Plan enacted by this ordinance can be found on Jefferson County website at, as listed, and at the Jefferson County Clerk's office. Whereas duly noticed public hearing before Jefferson, before county board was held on December eighth, twenty-twenty, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Committee and the Executive Committee recommended enacting the draft Agricultural Preservation and Land Use Plan on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, now therefore be it ordained pursuant to chapter ninety-one of Wisconsin State statutes and Jefferson County Agricultural Preservation Plan, Land Use Plan, also known as Farmland Preservation Plan, is hereby enacted and amended based on the recommendation of the Joint Planning and Zoning Committee and Executive Committee as set forth in the attached resolution incorporated by reference. Fiscal note, there is no direct fiscal impact associated with this ordinance. Mister Chair, I move for passage of the ordinance.
Bernard second.
Bernard second, okay. Um, I will back, uh, before we go into discussion on this ordinance, I'll back up just a little bit. Item A is certification of the Jefferson County Farmland Preservation. I should have Matt Zangle, uh, basically that's, that's your letter in here. Would you please, could you please address the, or what that means?
Sure, that's just a, a letter and a order from the department or DAT cap Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection stating that they'll certify the farmland preservation plan as being in compliance with chapter ninety-one and other state statutes contingent upon county board approval. So, the plan is approved by DAT cap contingent upon the ordinance.
Thank you, Mister Zang. Okay. We introduced the ordinance and the number was again Audrey Wood, pardon, was?
Number seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you. So ordinance number seventeen. Questions, discussion? Had this in front of you for quite a while. We've been grinding through this for nearly, getting close to eighteen months or two years, so. Speak now or hold your peace. Glad your opportunity here. I will say this, that any comprehensive plan can be amended if we find there isn't things that aren't working right a year or two or four from now. We've amended the past plan is, at times as well. So, just so you know, this'll be the plan, but it's not absolutely carved in stone and can't be changed if we run into a problem. Anything, questions? Anybody online? See none? All in favor of passing this ordinance, uh, amending the Jefferson County Agriculture Preservation and Land Use Plan, also known as a farm, farmland preservation plan, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, excellent. Ordinance, uh, item C, ordinance of amending the Jefferson County Comprehensive Plan. Mister Jacob?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-eighteen. Whereas section sixty-six point one zero zero one of the Wisconsin State statutes requires that comprehensive plan must be updated no less than once every ten years, and whereas Jefferson County's comprehensive plan was updated on September second, twenty-ten, and on June ninth, twenty-twenty, whereas county board adopted public participation plan on February twelfth, twenty-nineteen, to guide the process of amending Jefferson County Comprehensive Plan, and whereas the final version of the comprehensive plan enacted and by this ordinance can be found at, on Jefferson County website and at Jefferson County Clerk's office, whereas a duly noticed public hearing before county board was held on December eighth, twenty-twenty, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Committee and Executive Committee recommended enacting the draft on comprehensive plan on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, now therefore be it ordained that pursuant to section sixty-six, one thousand one of the Wisconsin State statutes of Jefferson County Comprehensive Plan is hereby enacted, as amended based on the recommendation of the Joint Planning and Zoning Committee and Executive Committee as set forth in this attached resolution incorporated by reference. Fiscal note, there is no direct fiscal impact associated with this ordinance. Mister Chair, I move for passage of this ordinance.
I have a second, uh, second from Supervisor Paulson. Okay. Uh, any questions? Can, discussion? As you will notice in your packet, the, just the way the, the law is written, there had to be a resolution from the committee first to the board and then the ordinance had to be done. So there's a resolution for the farmland preservation plan and a resolution consistent with ordinance number eighteen is on your, on the next page, and that is, again, came from the joint committees, a planning, zoning and executive committee, uh, basically suggesting that the board adopt it. Anything, questions, discussion? Again, all in favor of adopting ordinance number eighteen, amending the Jefferson County Comprehensive Plan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? It is adopted. Takes us to proclamation recognizing Supervisor Augie Teets from Watertown.
So, uh, tonight I humbly get to provide this to the county board for consideration, and when we worked with our staff, we had the privilege of working with Augie, um, for the last numerous years. It was pretty easy to put together. And I think the one thing that's kind of unique is as you, as you look at what Augie, uh, priorities were as elected official, it's kind of, um, we approved the comp plan tonight. You think of things that Augie was passionate about, it's a lot was involved in that comprehensive plan. It's the outdoors, it's preserving, it's the trails. It's looking at economic development and business opportunities for local communities, um, and that's where he was passionate about economic development and the, and the railroad consortium. Um, it's about people. Um, he was hued with the human services board and things related to that. And so as you look at the things that we just passed tonight, a lot of that embodies what Augie did on his service to Jefferson County. So, uh, I present to you, whereas Augie Teets serves as a county board supervisor for District Four from July of tw- two thousand nine to December thirteenth of twenty-twenty-one, and whereas Augie Teets also served on the Parks Committee, Board of Health, Economic Development Consortium, Human Services Board, Law Enforcement Emergency Management Committee, Human Services Board, Strategic Planning Commission Committee, Veteran Service Commission and the Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission, and whereas Supervisor Teets was known for his dedication to preserving outdoor spaces and his never-ending support for the parks and trails of Jefferson County, and whereas Supervisor Teets had a passion for building the economic vibrancy of Jefferson County and showed consistent dedication to the services that supported businesses' growth over time, and whereas Supervisor Teets served on the Human Services Board and went above and beyond to advocate with legislators for funding and strong programs to serve all county residents, and whereas Supervisor Teets in all meetings expressed compassion and kind regard for the people he represented, was fair and prudent, and had great financial acumen. And whereas Supervisor Teets, as a veteran himself, oversaw aid rendered to veterans in need as a member of the Jefferson County Veteran Service Commission, and further invested his time and perspective in the development of the Jefferson County Veterans Foundation, a five oh one C three founded in August of twenty-nineteen, which will benefit veterans and their families far into the future. And whereas Supervisor Teets had a desire for and recognized that community wellness and healthy environments were linked to outdoor recreation. And whereas Supervisor Teets should be recognized as leader in the area of parks and recreation and conservation. He had experience at the city, county and state level. He had experience in Wisconsin and Illinois. He was unwavering in his advocacy for the field. This was resulted as a firsthand experience of the physical, mental and emotional benefits that accrue to our local communities through involvement in these programs. But most of all, Augie was a great citizen servant because he listened to and truly cared about the people he represented. And whereas the Jefferson County Board of Supervisor recognizes Supervisor Teets' public service, foresight, leadership and thoughtfulness, which will be missed. Now therefore be resolved that the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors meeting this ninth day of February two, twenty-twenty-one does hereby honor Supervisor Augie Teets and wishes happiness and good health in the years ahead. I humbly recommend approval of this proclamation.
So moved.
So moved, now the second, so moved by Supervisor Broglor, second by Supervisor Scholz. I just want to say that Augie was an excellent supervisor and also a good friend, and I'll miss his, miss him on this board. Um, we will have a new supervisor eventually, but he can't be replaced. We will miss him. Supervisor Knott?
I'd like to, I, the copy I have here says December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. I think that's a typo. So we'd want to correct that.
We'll get it corrected. Anyone else? All in favor of honoring Supervisor Teets, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I didn't think so. Thank you very much. Okay, item number, oh, public comment, excuse me. Public comment, is anybody here for public comment on anything that is on the agenda? Seeing none? I don't think there was, wasn't anybody signed up when I came in. Okay. All right, moves on to human, uh, resources. Supervisor Broglor?
Resolution number twenty-twenty forty-two. Creating one full-time events and operation manager position, eliminating one unfunded full-time Fair Park Supervisor position, and unfunding a vacant full-time marketing specialist position at Fair Park. Currently, the Fair Park staff is responsible for the year-round events rental and county-owned events operation, using over fifteen buildings, outdoor arenas and the ground surrounding these facilities, covering over ninety acres. Specific daily needs include determining objectives and requirements for events, customer service, building maintenance, and being on call for emergencies during events. At present, the Fair Park staff consists of a full-time Fair Park and events, and county fair and park events director position, one full-time administrative assistant position, two full-time maintenance worker two positions, and one part-time grounds worker position. In addition, there are two seasonal worker positions, two onsite caretaker positions, and approximately twenty county fair worker positions at the Fair Park. In twenty-twenty, due to budget constraints, one full-time Fair Park Supervisor position was unfunded in the twenty-twenty-one budget after being vacated due to retirement. In December twenty-twenty, the marketing specialist position became vacant following a voluntary resignation. Due to COVID nineteen, the majority of Fair Park events were canceled in twenty-twenty, and marketing plans and contracts were carried over to twenty-twenty-one. While this significantly decreased the workload for the marketing specialist position in twenty-twenty-one, the continued surge of events rentals scheduled in twenty-twenty-one has produced an emerging need for servicing events and managing operations. Therefore, the county fair and park events director and the county administrator recommend creating one full-time events and operation manager position, eliminating one unfunded full-time Fair Park Supervisor position, and unfunding one vacant full-time marketing specialist position. These position changes will provide consistent staffing levels needed to service new events in the future while successfully managing operations. With the savings of unfunded current vacated marketing specialist position and increased revenues from event rentals, no tax levy was requested for twenty-twenty-one. In future years, the newly created events and operation manager position will be sustained with increased revenues from events. On January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Human Services Committee reviewed the requests from the county administrator and the county fair and park event director and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board. Skipping to the fiscal note, the annual cost for salary and fringe benefits of the full-time events and operation manager position is ninety-five thousand four hundred twenty dollars, seventy-three thousand forty-seven dollars for the remainder of twenty-twenty-one. The savings from the vacancy and unfunding of the market specialist position is seventy-seven thousand one hundred seventy dollars for salary and fringe benefits in twenty-twenty-one. Therefore, no tax levies required. This is a budget amendment. County board approval requires two-thirds votes of the entire membership of the county board, twenty votes of the thirty-member board. I move for passage.
Who's, who's the second? Supervisor Paulson? Okay. Discussion? Seeing none, the moment of truth, let's try our vote on this once and on our tablets and see how this goes. Oh. I'm up for second. That me doing it, I guess I am. Okay. All right, it's been motion seconded. That's how it works.
Happy yes or no?
That's how it's supposed to work.
Wait. Is it happy yes? Okay. You're good. Yes, you did.
Supervisor David?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Roberts?
I vote yes.
Okay, it has passed with twenty-eight yes and zero no. Two absent.
Thank you. Thank you. Moves us to item eleven, Land and Water Conservation Committee Resolution, adopting counties, uh, Jefferson County's twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty-thirty Land and Water Resources Management Plan. Supervisor Focker?
All right. That's a resolution number eighteen or? Twenty-three?
Forty-three.
All right, resolution twenty-three.
I'm sorry, it's forty-three.
Forty-three?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, resolution number forty-three. Um, Wisconsin law requires each county to have land and water resources management plan that has been approved by the county board. The Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection, and Wisconsin Land and Water Board, plans are approved for a ten-year period. As such, the Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department developed the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-thirty Land and Water Resources Management Plan. This plan, plan presents information on the soil, water and natural resources of Jefferson County and details the goals and work plan of the Land and Water Conservation Department. The plan also enables Jefferson County to obtain state funds that offset Land and Water Conservation Department staffing costs and provide state share, state cost share funds for implementing conservation practices. The Land and Water Conservation Committee considered this resolution at its meeting on January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, and recommended forwarding to the county board to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-dash twenty-thirty Land and Water Resources Management Plan. Whereas the executive summary is incorporated into this resolution, and whereas chapter ninety-two of the Wisconsin statutes requires counties to establish a land and water resources management plan, and whereas the Land and Water Conservation Department developed Jefferson County's first land and water resource management plan in two thousand, and is required to update the plan for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-thirty, and whereas the Land and Water Conservation Department has developed a twenty-twenty-one, twenty-thirty Land and Water Resources Management Plan, fulfilling all these requirements of the Administration Code ATCP fifty-dash twelve. And whereas the Land and Water Conservation Department held a public hearing on the Land and Water Resources Management Plan on December first, twenty-twenty, and whereas the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-thirty Land and Water Resources Management Plan establishes the goal to restore, improve and protect land and water resources in Jefferson County and approve ten-year work plan for the Land and Water Conservation Department, and whereas the Land and Water Resources Management Plan makes Jefferson County eligible to receive Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection staffing funds and cost share funds to implement conservation practices. Now therefore be it resolved that Jefferson County twenty-twenty-one, twenty-thirty Land and Water Resources Management Plan is hereby approved by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, and the Land and Water Conservation Committee is directed to implement said plan through the annual budget process. Fiscal note, acceptance of this plan and subsequent approval by the Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection and the State of Wisconsin Land and Water Resources Board will enable the Land and Water Conservation Department to be eligible for staffing grants and cost sharing grants for conservation practices implementation. For twenty-twenty-one and the following amounts are projected to be one hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and ninety dollars for staffing funds and forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty for cost sharing funds. Uh, Mister Chair, I move for, uh, resolution twenty-four or forty-three.
You have a second? Second by Supervisor Knott? Seeing none? I think we do a voice vote for this. All in favor? Well, we'll show it one second.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Do you have a question Supervisor Broglor?
I was thinking you were gonna do a roll call.
Oh, okay. All right, this takes us to, uh, item twelve. Oh, anyone opposed? I didn't ask. Hearing none, it passes. Uh, it takes us to item number twelve, Parks Committee. Supervisor Johns?
Resolution number twenty-twenty?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Thank you. Uh, resolution number twenty-twenty forty-four, authorizing acceptance of bid on Dorothy Carnes Park, Kemeter acreage agricultural two-year lease. Executive summary, the Jefferson Park County Parks Department solicited bids for a two-year lease of approximately seventy-six acres of farmland located, located in Dorothy Carnes County Park. The only bid was submitted by W.D. Hord and Sons Company. The Parks Committee considered this resolution at its meeting on December fourteenth and recommended forwarding to the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors to accept the bid of W.D. Hord and Sons Company. Whereas the executive summary is incorporated into this resolution, and whereas Jefferson County owns approximately seventy-six acres of farmland at Dorothy Carnes Park, which it leases through public bidding for agricultural purposes. And whereas the current agricultural lease expires on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, or upon removal of leases, last seasonal crops, whichever comes first. Whereas the Parks Committee, Committee has solicited bids for a two-year lease commencing March first, twenty-twenty-one, and ending February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, with the following results expressed on per acre basis. Two-year bid forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty, annual amount twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty, per acre amount three hundred and ten dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the county administrator is authorized to enter into a two-year lease with W.D. Hord and Sons Company for seventy-six acres of farmland located in Dorothy Carnes Park County Park for the annual rental payment of twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Fiscal note, total rent for the two-year term is forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, which will be used for habitat restoration or future park development. Annual revenue of twenty-four thousand dollars is included in Jefferson County's twenty-twenty-one budget. I move to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by, I saw Supervisor Lindell's, look like it's there. So, any further discussion, questions? Take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. Supervisor Johns?
Resolution number twenty-twenty forty-five. Authorizing motorized recreation grant application to fund the Jefferson County snowmobile trail aid program. Jefferson County participates in the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources snowmobile trail aid program funded by a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources motorized recreation grant, which provides funding for the development and maintenance of approximately a hundred and nine, nine point two miles of public snowmobile trails in Jefferson County. County board authorization is required to apply for this grant. This resolution authorizes the Jefferson County Administrator to submit a Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Motorized Recreation Grant application seeking funds for snowmobile trail mail and, trail maintenance and development, and to administer the funds according to the grant requirements. The Parks Committee considered this resolution at its February first, twenty-twenty-one meeting and recommended forwarding to, for the county board for approval. Let's skip down to this, now therefore be resolved that the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors authorizes the Jefferson County Administrator to act on behalf of Jefferson County to submit an application to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for, and any financial aid that may be available for the snowmobile trail aid program. Submit reimbursement claims along with necessary supporting documents, and take all other actions required to undertake direct and administrate the snowmobile trail program and aid. Be it further resolved that Jefferson County will comply with state and federal laws and rules requiring the program to be open to the general public during reasonable hours, and will obtain from the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approval in writing before any change is made in the use of the project sites. Fiscal note, the snowmobile trail aid program is expected to cost approximately fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for the winter twenty-one and twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. One hundred percent of this cost is funded by the grant, and the anticipated grant funds and related expenses have been included in the adopted budget for twenty-twenty-one. I move to approve this resolution.
You have a second? Second by Supervisor Morris. I've been advised by council, we need a roll call vote on this, on this item, it has budget ramifications.
Supervisor David? We have twenty-eight yes, zero no, and two absent.
Okay, thank you. Planning and zoning committee, item number thirteen Supervisor Jacob.
To the honorable members of the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee. Having considered petitions to amend the official zoning map of Jefferson County filed for public hearing held on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. As required pursuant. To Wisconsin State Statutes notice thereof having been given and been. Being duly advised of the wishes of the town boards and persons in the affected areas. Hereby make the following recommendations. Approval of petitions as listed. Denial of petition as listed dated this twenty-fifth day of January twenty twenty-one. Blaine Paulson Secretary. That goes on to ordinance number. Twenty twenty forty-six. Amending Jefferson.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, sorry.
Resolute in forty-six.
Right. Amending official zoning map. Whereas Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. Has heretofore been petitioned to amend the official zoning map of Jefferson County and whereas petitions. As listed. Were referred, referred to the Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee for public hearing. On January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one and whereas proposed amendments have been given. Due consideration by the Board of Supervisors in open session. Now therefore be ordained Jefferson County Board of Supervisors does amend the official zoning map of Jefferson County as follows. And move for approval of this ordinance.
Do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Paulson. Discussion, questions? Supervisor White.
I must abstain due to a potential work conflict.
Okay. I think you can do that on your board there too when you get there.
Oh, I need to abstain also.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Why don't we use the board here since we have abstainers? So we'll vote on our tablets. Maybe not. Or we could move on. We have two abstentions, otherwise all in favor of this ordinance, say aye.
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 Opposed? And we have abstentions by Supervisor White and Supervisor Canard. Okay, and then item C. Supervisor Jacob.
Resolution number twenty twenty forty-six denies, denying petition to amend. Official zoning map. I want to make motion to refer this to committee.
This will be referred back to, do I have a second? Second by Supervisor Paulson. This will be referred back to committee. For further discussion and evaluation. There is a. There's no vote on this then, so that moves us on to appointments by the County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I virtue of authority vested me in section fifty-nine point one eight. Period two, period B of the Wisconsin statutes. I respectfully request confirmation of the following appointment. Maria Dabel of Jefferson, Wisconsin to the Board of Health for a three-year term ending May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Respectfully request confirmation.
So we had, did you catch those, who they were? Okay. Good eyes, thank you. Any, any discussion, questions? All fair of these appointments, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? They are approved. Item fifteen, appointments to the Human Services Board. Mr. Waymire. Pardon? Oh Supervisor Jones, okay. Supervisor Jones, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'm a long ways away, so. By virtue of the authority vested in the Human Service Board under section three point oh six of one sub G of the County Board Rules, the Human Service Board hereby request the County Board's confirmation of the following appointments. Third hand, Ice Vera, Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin to the Aging and Disability Resource Center Advisory Committee, A D R C. For a three-year term ending July one, twenty twenty-four. And Michael Winnicky, Watertown, Wisconsin to the Aging and Disability Resource Center Advisory Committee, A D R C for a three-year term ending July one, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Chair, I move for approval of these appointments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I didn't catch who it was. Okay, second to Supervisor Johns. Any discussion, questions? All fair of these appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, they are approved. Takes us to public comment of a general nature, anything of a general nature? Seeing none. Takes us to announcements, I would just like to thank and ask who got us these nice Valentines, I thank you very much. Thank you Serena, we appreciate it, we love you too. Our next County Board meeting will be March ninth, twenty twenty-one. We are in a process, I will let you know, we're in a process of looking to. Fill Supervisor Teets's seat. I've gotten some names at this point, it's a little bit of a process I, to go through, I do not want to. Move towards a special election, we've had enough elections lately. And we, and we already got a ballot going this spring that it'd be hard to get on, so. I think we'll just do this through an appointment, I, I don't see, I don't see anybody saying. Let's have another election, so I appreciate that. But I hope, hopefully we can have somebody ready to go by April. As you do know Supervisor Christensen has already taken out a spot. On Parks, filling in for Augie in that, that capacity. And we will gradually fill some of his other. Appointments. We'll have to wait and see as to who gets appointed, what kind of time. Commitment they'll be able to give us before we make any more appointments to some of the other things that Augie was on. So. Thank you for your patience on this. Anything else, anybody else have announcements, other than we know it's cold? Mr. Waymire.
So just a couple announcements, so. First of all, you have the draft budget calendar in front of you, we talked about this with the Finance Committee. We thought I was just trying to get it out early to the whole board, so they understood the full process, so if there's any questions, please reach out to Mark or I. Or any of the board members who are on the Finance Committee, talk through that process a little bit more. Well, the second is, although he's been doing it a while and he's had the name, but since he's here tonight, I'm gonna, I'm letting everyone know, but officially I have named Kevin Weisman as our interim Parks Director. We'll be going for things later on this year, but just so you know, he's officially in that role, so you'll see that new title on his signature block, but the team's been doing awesome. Between Kevin and the rest of the team of carrying the legacy of the parks system forward and looking at new opportunities, so just making sure everyone knows that. And the last thing, continue to keep informed as we look at our rolls for COVID nineteen, specifically with the vaccines. We're doing the best we can with the resources that we're providing. I will tell you, it's a great community effort. For those who've had the opportunity to walk through that site, we have volunteers from the out to community, we have Team Rubicon, who's a bunch of retired veterans and folks with CDC etcetera running that site. And we have more than enough volunteers, which is an awesome statement about the community of trying to make this thing going, so. And as we try to continue to work through the plans of what we actually receive. We will continue to use the computer system and we'll start working on telephone calls too, because we know we got the population that needs to help with the internet side, so if you get calls. Feel free to reach out to myself, refer them to our website or the team, the public health team, but just so know they're doing an awesome job, we probably had about eleven different health departments. Come take a look at what our team has done. So it's, it's a pretty neat thing that they're working through. And the last part I always say, even though we have so good amount of numbers. The biggest comment we're getting is compassion and courtesy. And I think that's a really neat comment to say about what our team is doing out there too, so with that being said, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Waymire, appreciate that, and I. I encourage everyone to get their vaccine when there's enough vaccine out there for you to get, that's, that's the biggest issue right now, because we could, we have the personnel and expertise to get in people's arms, we just need to get it here. Mr. Chair, would you like to mention at all, we're pleased to have you back and you're, and just briefly mention your experience? For those that don't know.
Kind of a nightmare. Doing better. I ended up with it just right before Christmas.
We can't hear you on the computer.
New Year's Eve, I was in the hospital, I can yell at you. I can give it to your kid.
They can't hear you on the computers, what happens.
Like I said, New Year's Eve, I was in the hospital again with. Bacterial pneumonia. Made it to March, or the eighth of February, walked into the doctor's office. Threw a bushel basket of blood clots and didn't really know it, we left the doctor's office and. Next day I was in the hospital, transferred to Madison. I thank you for all the cards, letters, prayers that you put forward for me. I appreciate it very much, it's been a very humbling experience with all the people that have been helpful. I truly mean that, my sheriff's office staff has done an excellent job keeping me informed. I couldn't ask for more and County Administrator's been great, so. I wouldn't wish this on anybody, it is a way to lose thirty-plus pounds, but hey. It's all good, on the mend.
Thank you, Paul. Another announcement I'd like to make is that Supervisor Connor Neeland's business was in the Super Bowl commercial yesterday, right before the game started. The one that had some pretty in it. And it was filmed partially in Fort Atkinson, so. We, we didn't see you, but we appreciated it, thank you very much. Bringing some, some notoriety to Jefferson County, national notoriety to Jefferson County. And lastly, I have a question. We have been instructed by Mark that we will now be not using blue sheets anymore, correct? And as far as tonight, should we be expecting something for tonight or? Are just the signing sheets good enough for tonight, okay? I believe, you want to explain why we, we made this move, Mark?
Certainly, these are for the committee meetings, by the way. There was, there was a lot of confusion about what was the real document of record, whether it was the Google Doc that was out online or whether it was. The blue sheet, and since not everybody's present to sign the blue sheet. We moved it out to the Google Docs, so. The Secretary of each one of the committees, please be responsible for making sure that those are completed. We can help you out as staff if you'd like us to locate where those Google Docs are and get them completed as well. So just reach out to myself and, or Tammy Yeager, she's the, kind of the master of the Google Docs and she can help you out.
Supervisor Morris.
Would it be possible in light of that? Or like the agendas for committee meetings that get printed for like the next, I don't know, month? To just add in there a statement about signing the Google Doc instead of the blue sheet, would that be a possibility?
On the agenda itself?
Some of us are forgetful. I'm not, I'm not pointing at anybody.
Well, we, we'll, we'll catch it if you, if somebody forgets to turn it in, our, our staff is all over that.
The reminder might be helpful there.
Okay.
Good point. Anything else, any other announcements? I think. We have a move, we have a second to that. Have a second, there's no discussion on adjournment? All in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned, stay warm, please.